This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call the order of the Monterey Select Board on July 22nd at 6:00 PM. We have all three members of the board present here in Town Hall. And our first order of business is welcoming Kevin Treewarden.
Hi Kevin.
Thanks Kevin.
Hello all.
A report on a number of items, as I understand it.
Yes, but it's really, it's quite a brief report. It's just, my thought was here at the beginning of fiscal year '26, you might want to have an update and to know what's going on and what I'm thinking about and looking at for the year ahead. The, and then I've got a few items and then I want to ask if you guys have questions that are related to trees. The first thing is just a general, to give you a general sense of the cutting schedule for the first half of fiscal year '26. There are, we continue to deal with ash trees, with emerald ash boards, and the consequence of the emerald ash board infestation. The first thing I want to focus on for the first half of fiscal year '26, the rest of this calendar year, is cutting along 23. I'm sure you've seen, noticed a number of ash trees along 23 that need to be taken care of. I see them and it's time to get to them. It's been about five years, maybe four years since we had a big work on 23. There are also several whack-a-mole trees that we need to deal with. Some dying trees here and there that are adjacent to resident properties. Trees that have been brought to my attention because of resident concerns. And I'll speak about that a little bit more in just a second. And so those are obviously at the top of the priority list for the beginning of this fiscal year. Number two, fiscal year '26 issues looking ahead. One is, as you probably already know and have seen, Beech Leaf Disease is here and afoot. It's really heartbreaking to see. It is a, it's a new, it's a novel pathogen. It's an airborne nematode of all things.
Airborne nematode?
An Aeolian parasite is the term of ours. It is an airborne nematode that cropped up 12 years ago, quite recently. It's unique in the world. No one knows where it came from. No one quite knows the story. There doesn't seem to be any kind of prevention or cure, even for the homeowner, right? And at the level of municipals, municipalities and forests, there's nothing to be done.
None of the nematodes are in this work, huh?
So, and it's an early, it's emerged recently, although there's a lot of research being done, there's not yet any solution. So, the sad reality is that we're gonna have to, is that we're gonna lose a lot of beech trees in Monterey. There are not so many beech trees along the right-of-way, but there are some.
A lot of beech trees though.
There are a lot of beech trees in the forest generally.
Yeah.
So, that is gonna impact sort of cutting plans over the next couple of years. And it's gonna, you know, it's, I thought that we were, and we are in fact, slowly getting ahead of the emerald ash board situation. Just because we've cut so many trees now, there are not so many left to cut, right? But now we have this new problem to deal with and it's, I just wanted to put it on your radar so you're aware of it. The disease seems to progress somewhat more slowly than emerald ash board. It seems to have to have a multi-year effect of stressing the trees rather than killing them instantly. So, I, at the moment, I'm just watching, especially on Tierney Road, as you know, where Tierney Road crests before going down into the valley. You can see there a number of ash, beech trees that are blinded, or affected. And so I'm watching to see how it works.
The leaves fall off, they kind of curl and get brown, yeah.
That's it, that's it. Another 2016 fiscal year '26, fiscal year '26 issue to alert you to is that National Grid is really focused elsewhere this year. They obviously have their own budgets and their own priorities and they are doing a lot of cutting in Williamstown this year. So, they have told us that they're not gonna be able to do much for us here. Except in sort of really, in case there's, unless there's a real kind of emergency situation. It's possible that if they find themselves with a crew that is unassigned, every now and again, they could send someone down here. I've given them the list of, you know, of trees that I think are their concern, their responsibility honestly. But if they're not gonna take them out this year, then we're gonna have to. And so some of the whack-a-mole trees that I mentioned a minute ago are trees that I would prefer National Grid to take out, but I think we need to take them out because they're dead and they've been, they're standing dead and it's time to deal with them. And so we're just gonna have to bite the bullet on that. Let's see, future issues. This is more long-term looking ahead, but I just, I want to flag the, that when we're thinking about and dealing with larger infrastructure issues like the Curtis Road, the Curtis Road Bridge Replacement, like the potential future replacement of Culverton Town, I really would, would like to encourage us to also be thinking about the impact on trees, especially here in Curtis Road, and the opportunity, let's say, that exists for thinking of trees and landscape planning as part of larger projects like the Culverton Project. There's certainly a lot of good, there are many good resources that we can draw on out there. And with, I'm planning to attend the meeting of course for, to discuss the Curtis Road Bridge Replacement. And I understand that, you know, that we're gonna likely, that one option is to route traffic down Lover's Lane, down Rude Road in order to, you know, close Curtis Road. But that's definitely, it's gonna affect the trees. And that's a really, that's a really, really important, special stretch of trees in Monterey. It's one of the few mature over-road canopies that we have. I've looked back with John Field about a year ago to think about sort of maintenance and sort of how to keep those, that canopy healthy long-term through a little bit of selective pruning. But I also have kind of waited to do anything there until we have some sense of what's happening with Curtis Road. And so, so that, I just, I just want to say that I would, I would hope that we can, that I could be part of those conversations around to help the trees because it's, whatever happens on Curtis Road and on Rude Road is going to have a direct impact on the trees along Rude Road.
It's really, that whole situation is, as is often the case, is complicated and fraught with difficult trade-offs, none of which are terribly appealing. I mean, at least in, based on our past conversations, I feel like I can say that on behalf of most members of the board, all of them really. I mean, because the option is really to go down that section of road, possibly endangering the trees or maybe certainly endangering some of the trees. Or to extend the project a lot by doing it one lane ahead of time.
But it's cost, you know.
Yeah, and it would be a lot more expensive and take like twice as long, possibly longer. And both options are problematic.
And I understand that you, as a board, you'll have to make the decision if you think it's the right decision. I just want to be able to advocate for trees to make sure that they're part of the conversation.
And it was definitely part of the conversation, but we welcome your input. I'm just noting that I find that very frustrating and awful. Because I don't really like either solution. And I can't find a solution, see, that is less problematic.
Let's see, last thing before opening it to your questions. My administrative goal, I guess, this year is to draft some policies and procedures in conversation, of course, with stakeholders in town. Highway Department first and foremost, and Police Department, Y'all, NADA Plan Group, you know, other stakeholders that, and I'm open to suggestions as to who you think would be the right people for me to, you know, to listen to. I'll talk to National Grid, of course. But we, you know, we have, we have a certain way of doing things about trees. And some of that I kind of inherited by osmosis and some of that I kind of figured out. Some of it I've been taught by, you know, by the people in town, by John Fields, by others who have been working on this longer than I. But it does seem like it would be the sensible thing for us to have some policies and procedures in place. I know that I have flagged in the past the idea of having some sort of a tree bylaw, which would, which would be quite ordinary, quite normal, quite typical for a town of our size. And there are certainly plenty of good templates to look at in other towns. I'm not, I think it's probably best to start with having conversations and beginning to kind of distill out some ideas, you know, some potential policies before going officially to the Bylaw Committee.
Does bylaws, do bylaws end up, bylaws don't tend to evolve very readily. Does that tend to actually be a good way to go about things or a problematic way to go? I have no idea how they function in other committees.
Yeah, that's, I don't think that I'm equipped to answer that question.
Okay.
And that's actually a question that probably should, that probably bears some conversation and discussion. I think that having, as a baseline, having a kind of booklet of, you know, tree warden policies or tree warden procedures just as a kind of, you know, set of guidelines for, you know, for myself and for future tree wardens, that's a good place to start. And then we can also talk about some of the, some of the other kind of stuff. Because it does get, there are legalistic issues to consider and things like that which may, you know, get us into conversations about bylaws. But again, I'm not informed enough yet to speak to them. So that's all I've got. Questions? Is there anything I can, I can speak to, right?
No, you have to answer my question about emerald ash boards. Is there a way, is there a site in for it in there?
The sad answer to that is it'll be over when the trees are dead. There's, the mortality rate is quite high, like 90%, 95%. It does seem like there's some, there are some trees that are getting through. The assessment from the DCR is that in 100 years, we'll have ash back on the landscape because ash will repopulate, ash being a kind of a very vigorous tree that's well-suited to this environment. The ash populations will recover and rebound from the few trees that get through. But we're in the mid, we're in that bottleneck right now, right? And so, and we're not all the way through. So, we're probably past peak mortality, right? So more trees have died than there are left to die. But there, but we're not done with, you know, with the issue. And certainly the pest itself is not gonna be eradicated. So that's, that's gonna be part of the landscape, you know, going forward.
This is a weird question that maybe no one has an answer for, but with the ashes being, I mean, chestnuts were decimated a long ago, but with the ashes being decimated and now the beech being decimated, any prognostication of what the dominant trees and canopy are gonna look like in five or 10 years?
It's a great question. So, you know, the, our.
And your maple disease too.
Their, maples are having, are having troubles. Maples are having real troubles this year. And, yeah. And so, the oaks, the oaks are not without their own problem, but the oaks, there are multiple oaks on the landscape, right? And there, you know, there are other things like, there are some smaller trees like hophorn bee and carpinas hornbeam, bluebeach. You know, it's a real question to, I mean, it's like the landscape, the forests of New England are definitely changing and changing dramatically.
And the beech was a really big food source for a lot of ash.
Beech is a really important tree and, yeah.
And none of those, I don't know, the hornbees or, I mean, the oaks, yeah, but the hornbees are, yeah.
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah. And the only thing I can say is that we, if we look back at historical blights that were devastating, like the chestnut blight, what we've seen 100 years later is that, you know, this is our forest, right? We have big trees out in the woods, we have big oaks and, you know, and lots of oaks that are producing acorns for wildlife. So, you know, like that was not, that was a significant and sad change to the forest, but the forests are still there. And so I think we have to look at this Beech Leaf Disease situation with a similar kind of sense of, well, we'll see what's gonna come, but there will be more trees in the future.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you Kevin.
There you go. Thanks for all the work you've done.
It's a pleasure, enjoy it. You'll have to be.
He's really, he's invested so much effort in really learning about stoppage of the process.
Okay, moving on to the Parks Commission, which is slightly complicated. Because I went to the Parks Commission meeting and they are in favor of a candidate that's not currently a voter. There is a backup that they offered me should the board decide we want a voter, period. Stevens Wyke is becoming a voter, is in the process of becoming a voter.
Oh, is he?
Changing his residency, like John. So, he's been attending the meetings. They actually, the Parks Commission, we kind of had crossed lines and they mistakenly actually appointed him.
Okay.
And he went into the town board and got sworn in. Really, the Select Board is the appointing authority. But, all that said, Amanda is a, is a town voter. Steven is not, but he's becoming one.
He's gonna be a voter by the time the election rolls around and I have less objection.
Yeah.
I have to say, well.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was tricky because even if you have intent of becoming a voter, you may get hung up. And I guess even if you are a voter, you may move or not be interested when the day rolls around, but.
In which case, somebody else will have to run?
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with it too.
And we have the list of people who put their names in, so should, should that be a problem? There are people we can not, you know, approach and see if they're ready. So, and we could even approach someone and have them come, and election. Imagine two people running for the same position, it's, that would be crazy.
So that's that, they kind of know what they're getting into. Oh, and Steve Snyder, I don't know if, since our last meeting, Steve Snyder, did we talk about that?
Yeah, we talked about his resignation.
Did he?
Yes, he did, of course, I was speaking to the clerk, he did. In part because, I mean, he was already leaning that way and then I told him, look, we have, we have people that are interested, so.
Yeah, good for him. I bet he feels like it's a weight on his shoulders.
Yeah, he still, he tried to get out of Lake Garfield Working Group as well, but it's too late.
He's put his, he's put his work in. Okay, so should we go ahead and I will move to appoint Amanda Schmelinski? Is that how you pronounce her name? And Stevens Wyke to the Parks.
I second the motion.
Effective until the election.
And then the other discussion, we'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes. So that perhaps unanimously. I will reach out, and I also will reach out to the other candidates and say, thank you for applying and here's where else we need help. So I was thinking, we have an on-comp seat, what else really could use that?
I think that's the only one that really has any open space.
Yeah, I mean, I know there are, there are others who could add.
The construction committee.
We could add.
No, seriously, because ever since Ken resigned, I never found anyone else that was interested. I think they may not have the interest, you know, but.
I'm trying to think, COA, Con.
I think COA is mine field. Lake Garfield could, Lake Garfield actually would be another good option. And here's the other thing, there was two applications that were specifically aimed at Lombardo Park. And at least one that specifically stated it, and then at least one other neighbor of the park. And so, if we ever do end up forming an ad hoc committee and decide that's where we want to go, which I don't think is really where I'm leaning, but if we did, we have people to call on.
We just have to make sure that information doesn't get lost.
Yep. Okay, on speed limits, I don't think that we're quite prepared, we gotta get some more.
Yeah, I have, I sent Pat Tierney from the Mass DOT a last set of questions, but he was on vacation back in 2028.
I think also maybe just town council too.
Yeah, that's the last little bit.
Because we're between basically accepting the 17C.
Yeah.
And doing special speed regulations.
Special speed regulations, yeah.
And just putting up warning signs, I thought was also.
Yeah, and just putting up warning signs, we can always do. I think there's this big looming question of should we accept 17C? And what does that exactly entail? Because when it says thickly settled, do we need to follow that map to a T?
Or, you know.
Where did that map come from, from BRPC?
Also, I'd like to know why BRCP is against adopting, some people say, because.
I can ask again, but.
Yeah, but like having someone spell out a little more clearly what their reservations are about its adoption would be helpful because.
And that's one of my questions too, Pat Tierney, was how do we determine like where the road? Because I said, we have a map from BRPC, but is that the official map that we would use? Or we have to do something through Mass DOT? So those are the few questions I have. I mean, the other question I have is that we have certain sections of the road were designated on the BRPC map as thickly settled that are also speed regulation roads. So for example, down through Tierney Road between, above Hooby all the way down through downtown is considered thickly settled, but it's 30 miles an hour through most of that.
It's already dealt with, somebody already dealt with, they didn't pay it.
So. I thought my recollection was that it only applies if there's not a special regulation.
And that's why I just wanted to get it figured out, because I wasn't quite certain exactly where it was. But so there's a couple of little spots like that. So for example, another spot is up on 23 Main Road. There's a spot here or there that is considered thickly settled, but it's like 40 miles an hour. So, what does that mean? Because it's a special speed regulation.
I would particularly be in favor of that, adopting that 17C. If there was some conversation that map wasn't the end-all be-all. Because there certainly are roads in our class that are thickly settled that are thickly settled.
Yeah, 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 I do see.
All right, I think we'll look at the special articles list again.
Which, when are we doing this?
Carry forwards or what?
It has to be submitted by the 31st of July.
Are we doing carry forwards or encumbrances?
Carry forwards first.
So this is the list I went through. The only oddball one that I was hoping to eliminate was that first fire company capital improvement. That, so.
Wait, where?
It's the fourth, it's a hundred and six dollars and 98 cents.
Oh, right there, okay.
Yeah, so when I processed the invoice, I calculated to be using it, but then by the time the invoice got processed and everything, I didn't realize that there was actually tax on that invoice. So we don't pay tax, so that's the tax that was left on the invoice. So that's all that was left, so that'll be the first thing that goes. So, within the first, the next time we get an invoice from, for the, for the capital, that'll, that'll go away.
And you can't even, yeah, okay, so that'll go away.
Yeah. And then the second.
And then this, and then the community center pavilion.
Yeah.
Is not.
Wait, where is it? That's actually on the second page.
Yeah, plot track money just has its biggest two days.
Which one, the plot track?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, there's still 20, I think that was 129 or something.
Well, we passed this, this, just last year, but we haven't bought it yet or it hasn't been yet.
We have, it's in, it's in the garage getting parts stuck to it.
So we haven't paid for anything yet?
We have.
Is it, why do we still have $104,000 on it?
Because we bought the 90.
We bought the, like, the patch and everything, not the sander and the plow.
Okay, got you, got you, right.
That's correct, I had Pete give the, give the vendor a call and they're, they're working on it, they're expecting, they're hoping it to be done by end of September, October. And I was like, well, if it doesn't snow.
Yeah, right.
And the second page is where, where I break down the monies that were through Article 12, meaning the town meeting, break them down and how to put them into a new, a new, and I've talked to Eric about this. And how to break it down and put it into its own, take those two accounts, essentially close them out and put them in the one account.
Did the 63 use up the highway ticket for them?
It did not, no, it left 19,000. And I hoped originally to use all that, but then Justin reminded me that that's not what it said in the article.
Right, yeah.
So, I thought it was like any unused funds, but of unused funds, so. So, like I said, I went through any, any articles that were zeros that already had been paid, were eliminating. They fixed the one, because in the debt service, they, they fixed the ones that were for like the tandem axle. They did the journal entries for those.
Right.
And they fixed all that stuff. And I did a, and there was one for the weed control that was, make it 263. I did a reclassification, we're going through and fixing all those.
So, the tandem axle is in the highway charter now we don't. Right, yeah, and the library loan.
Yeah, there's.
100 means gone.
Yep, yep.
I like that.
Yeah.
So, if all goes well, it should just be what's listed on the front page, what's listed on the front page and then one additional from the community center. So that's all that'll be on the carry, carry forwards.
And grants wouldn't show up on a carry forward, this is only special articles.
No, this is only special articles, yeah, grants, grants sort of, grants automatically carry forward.
Okay, this is super annoying, I think I see why. But the very last thing, under the group, the health insurance code 914, total group one, segment two departments, the title on the left, it's the very last, second last item on the last page, I think, page 33. I noticed it says there it says 118.44, which might have made sense, given that there was a, oh, that's debt service.
Retired health and life.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where the.
So there's, there's a zero, it's also, there's, I think there's some other, they're, they're, they'll go through and fix these because there's like zero on the allocated for retired health, but that's FY23, so I just have to.
It's just weird.
I think some of these want, we're putting them on the list.
That whole area seems weird, yeah. Those numbers don't make sense.
We have to go through and fix that.
Okay. We're not carrying forward any milfoil.
No, all that is, all that's done, there's not, the other one was Lake Garfield weed control. The milfoil is, was, Eric's gonna be taking care of that, that negative 4,500.
How is he taking care of that?
Well, that was his error and he.
It's from Article, right, May 2022?
Yeah, that was an error. I asked him to give me an account number for something and, or he gave me an account number and I put it to that and the invoice got paid. And it wasn't the right invoice number, so he has to take care of that through the DLS, the gateway and all that for the upcoming year.
All right.
Forget what his term was, there was a term that he had for it, so he's taking care of that. Okay, I forget what, what he called, I'll find out.
And then encumbrances.
Encumbrances, yep, so those are all. These are basically items, invoices that came through after the last, after the 15th, right, yeah, after the 15th of July. So we had, we had until then to, to pay for the, no, I'm sorry, it was the 10th, the 10th of July. We had until then to pay for the, all that was remaining in FY25, and these all came in afterwards.
So the ones for the highway.
Rest of it's highway.
Yeah, a lot of this highway, some of it was catching up on some stuff, like some, some of these like, on the highway department, like those ATG ones that came in, one in February, I did not have it. And so, I got these statements, I reached out and got statements, essentially looking to see where those were. And the one for, the one for the $300, those are, those are boots, uniforms that were invoices that got misplaced. And I think one of them had them and the other one didn't, and I had to search that out. The Berkshire Mountain Spring Water is a problem. The Berkshire Mountain Spring Water is a problem that I'm consistently having with Berkshire Mountain Spring. Of supplying us with water, but they don't do jobs with, with places. So I had to just be like, I gotta make sure I have all the invoices. Wendy Jensen's.
There's a lot of background noise from the new remote joiner. So could you please mute yourself? And just raise your hand if you would like to speak.
Use it from here.
I don't think I have the raise my hand signal here. But just tell, when, tell me when you, tell me when you want to hear from me.
Okay.
Is it?
It's Mike.
Yes.
Oh, it's Mike Tramain. Okay. Yeah, we're wrapping up a financial item and then we'll, we'll turn it over to you in a minute.
So some. Yeah, so a couple, that, that one, there were a couple of them and for some reason they got missed. We submitted them, but they got missed. In the last one, so we had to, I just had to resubmit them. But it was after the date, so they end up as encumbrances, those and Melanie Sorrow and Jen Brown.
Is that, are those paid or what?
Those are reimbursements.
Okay.
Yeah, so for that, Wendy's, Wendy's was for purchasing some community center. Flowers, I mean, some, something else. And the ones for police department were boots.
Okay. What was Gateway Farm and Pet?
Gateway Farm and Pet was.
That boots?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So those are, those are both.
The branch that who live.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the end of it.
What's an encumbrance is a boots?
Yeah, everybody's buying the boots at the end of the year. So our money lost, let's do it.
Yeah, so th- those are, those are all of them. They're. You know, I, yeah, I, there is one. There is one invoice that will. There was enough money in the account, so it's gonna have to go to the, to the special town meeting. And it was, it was a, a, the Parks Commission, Parks Commission hit their budget hard. And then out of the blue, a, an invoice from Berkshire, Berkshire Community. South, South Berkshire Community, where we did the lifeguards, where we did lifeguards, all of a sudden it came in like three weeks after. Came in well after the.
Is there a separate account for lifeguard versus everything else?
No.
Yes, there is.
There's not enough money. No, it's, it's in the, it's in the beach, it's in, it's in the, it's in the Parks budget.
Budget? But I thought they had a separate line item.
They do have a separate line item, but there's not enough money.
To cover the lifeguards.
To cover the lifeguards, yeah.
Yeah, so, but that's unrelated to anything else that the Parks Commission does. Just the lifeguards were over budget.
Yes.
And we didn't do a reserve under anything because we didn't know about it.
We didn't know about it. It didn't come in, the invoice didn't come in until.
It's not surprising because every year we have to budget based on last year's contract.
Yeah.
And we never know what the upcoming year's contract is.
Yeah, I think the, and the.
How do we do that? I guess we just didn't have a compensate increase because we never know.
Yeah, yeah, we never know what's on actually.
Because we're talking about in February for what it's gonna cost, not this season, but the following season.
Which I don't much.
How, like forty-nine hundred dollars. It was almost all June.
Well, that's wrong.
Yeah.
That's.
It was for the month of June.
Well, did they switch to a different programming? I mean, that's huge. That's not like a little over. That's like they switched gears and went, instead of starting after school got out and then ended June, they started June one.
I don't know if they, I have to go back and look and see what the, what the, what the, what lifeguards, what they had there, what the, what the numbers were.
I think they were lifeguards during June when I drive by, so they'll be there.
Are we sure it's for last fiscal year?
No, it's for last fiscal year.
I think we need to.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't there till late June, so I don't think they really changed the schedule.
It was, it was the last couple of weeks of June.
How much is left in the lifeguard account?
It's like, it's, it's in the, the lifeguard account is in the, is in the Parks Commission. I'll go back through and look.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, like, how many hours a week are, are the?
No, it's.
I think the problem is that there's.
All items are being charged.
Your lifeguards.
I'm almost certain.
There's no other way.
Because that's a lot of money for two weeks worth of lifeguard.
Yeah, that's not what it is. It's gotta be.
I'll, I'll look at the invoice and I'll.
And it's tricky, like it was the end of June, not even middle of June, so that.
It was the last, I think it was the last couple of weeks of June.
So two weeks, but that, that's a lot.
No, but the problem is that, the problem is that we can't spend between the accounts. And this is why actually, we considered merging those accounts this year. We said we can't because the Parks Commission needs that structure. And then when they don't have it, here we are. And if it was like a hundred bucks, it's not a big deal, but like five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know. And but meanwhile, I'm feeling like five thousand dollars for two weeks of lifeguard coverage, something is hinky.
Well, we pay like thirty thousand per season.
Yeah.
For how many weeks of the season?
Something they go till.
Ten or twelve.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's two of them there. I don't know if they, I don't know if they brought in a third one yet. They have some, the contract says.
But, but, but thirty thousand for ten weeks would be three grand a week, right?
First of all, for two weeks.
Twelve would be less than that, so two weeks.
So for two weeks. It's, that's what it is, but they went and spent it elsewhere and.
And then when they, when they came, they, they were like, we have enough and they didn't account for it.
All right, speaking of Lake Garfield, Mike, thanks for joining us.
Okay, I'll make it quick. I'll probably talk too fast, so just interrupt me and ask questions. But things that have happened at Lake Garfield is that we only got a three-foot drawdown this year. It involved a lot of work on the parts, on the part of the, the road guys as well as me. Because you'd have to keep, I have to keep monitoring it and adjusting the, the gate. And every time we adjust the gate, they have to go down there. We had to figure out how many turns was equivalent to dropping it by so much per day. So you can imagine it was pretty complicated. But anyway. The other thing to know, and I think you guys know this, is that CONCOM wants to know when something is done. Scheduled to be done, and then when it ends, they want a report of completion. So that's something I want to let you know. We're on top of, you know, with the lake scientist and we do that. You know, she has to submit a report to them. So I find out about it, that it needs to be done and I remind the lake scientist, she doesn't seem to be. Like proactive and in, she's not like a turnkey AI assistant, you know? I have, I have to remind her when we need things done, so just to let you guys know that. Otherwise, we'll be out of compliance with CONCOM.
Just out of curiosity, Mike, I'm just curious. Having looked at that last, the last report from the lake scientist, it seemed pretty critical of the three-foot drawdown. And it also seemed to indicate that, that she didn't really think the change in drawdown was inherently beneficial to the organisms that the CONCOM was. Or the fisheries were concerned about. I'm wondering if there's any chance the CONCOM might reconsider that decision? Or if it's the DPW that's, or fisheries that's basically permitting it?
Yeah, so, so the lake scientist and Ken Wagner, who was actually the consultant for the state. For developing these new guidelines, they're not quite finalized yet. There was, it went out for public comment in May. And that finished already. And so I'm told that we may have, you know, new rules, you know, formalized by the end of the year. And we know from the drafts they sent that, that they are gonna try to stop all drawdowns. And, you know, if we get, like the guy from DEP told me last year, you're gonna be lucky if you get three feet. So obviously.
Is the state gonna chip in any money to deal with the invasives that result?
What's that?
I'm wondering if the state gonna chip in any money for dealing with the invasives that result because it's not gonna, here it's milfoil, but it's not gonna be just milfoil in other towns.
No, they, they don't pay for anything. They never have paid. We've never gotten a cent from the DEP on Lake Garfield. So that's not gonna happen ever. So, so what happened was that. Lake Garfield was part of a research study, actually, that went over three years and a guy got his PhD from UMass from it and published two articles on this. And so there's very good science that shows very little, you know, harm to any of the invertebrates. Because what happens is they just move in a little bit and they come back out. We did, you know, we paid a invertebrate expert to come and look at the lake last year. And basically, he said, yeah, you know, the drawdown affects those, you know, that area that gets, you know, frozen or dried out. But the, the lake has a very healthy population of invertebrates. So I'm not saying there's no effect from, from drawdown, but the effect is not necessarily bad. And it is, it is beneficial. So the benefits, benefits clearly outweigh the, you know, downsides of it. And this is what Ken Wagner wanted in there. And they completely stripped out all the science and everything out of their rule. And so he was furious. And he's willing to be, you know, to come to our meeting to, to advocate for this. But anyway, what'll happen is we will submit, with the lake scientists, submit an amendment to try to get the six-foot drawdown based on the data we. Got this year, that number one, that the three to six foot area that was not drawn down. Had very large amounts of milfoil. And they spent over half their time, you know, last month, working just on that three to six foot area. That never ever had milfoil before when we did six-foot drawdowns. And it involved, so it happened in basically one season. And it involves a fair amount of the small bowl. So it gets right up to the beach. It goes right around the beach. And so they had to work in that area where they never worked before. So we can go back to Conservation Commission, explain all this, you know, give them the science, everything else like that. But, you know, having been on CONCOM, I understand that they really don't want to go against. The DEP or Fish and Wildlife, because then they can just override them and, I mean, I guess they're not gonna take their house or, you know, put them in jail. But, you know, I guess they're just very resistant to fucking DEP or Fish and Wildlife, because like I said, they can override them. So we're gonna go to them, we're gonna bring our heavy guns. And at this point, I think, and the town, of course, this is important for the town to decide, but I guess I just recommend that. We come up with a strategy together. I think tonight, we're gonna talk about that and make recommendations to you. But, you know, the, the first step is what we're doing already, you know, this next, you know, we're gonna submit this the end of August. And, you know, the question is, do we do anything else politically? What role does the town have? And I think these are good questions. We certainly, at this point, are not advocating for it. You know, we know what happened to Stockbridge Bowl. They went to court, they won. And then the Conservation Commission made it so onus, onus for them. Because the CONCOM was, was angry and embarrassed, DEP was angry and embarrassed, Fish and Wildlife was angry and embarrassed. Because they had lost the court case, right? So what they do is turn around and just make it impossible for. To, for Stockbridge Bowl to do it. They actually won in court. So to this day, they have actually not done the work on the milfoil. Because of, you know, how this whole process goes. So I think we have to think twice about, you know. Off, you know, to the point of going to legislatures or anything. So not only did the weeds grow, the milfoil grew in that area, but we had a very, very unusual early cyanobacteria bloom. That the lake scientists tell me very well could have been because of the less deep drawdown. So, well, you can imagine that three to six foot area now is, is more shallow. Well, I'm sorry, less shallow, so there's more water there. And then we know the cyanobacteria comes from the sediment. And this is now, sediment is in underwater that then allows the cyanobacteria to come up more easily. And then get hit by sunlight and bloom. And there's no doubt in my going out on the lake every day. That these blooms were around, the three to six foot areas are around the, the large lake. And so, you know, this is another thing we want to raise to them, to say that you're doing more harm than good, not letting us draw down six feet. Not to mention, I'm sure you guys have heard, you know, people complaining about damage to their property and their stocks and stuff like that, which the DEP could care less about. So, but they're trying to care about it. And then you'll have to explain.
But the DEP should care about the health hazard, Mike.
What's that?
The DEP should care about the health hazard. It's not, it's not good for the environment or the, or people, either one of them.
Well, they're not really.
No, it's not good for the environment either. It kills a lot of fish. It kills a lot of stuff. It's not just people that suck cyanobacteria.
Yeah, so Fish and Wildlife don't care about people either. And when I say don't care, I don't mean the people. What I mean is it's not in their purview. It's not what they do. So, you know, I don't fault them for it. It's because it's not their job to care about people.
Right, but they should care about the fish and the other organisms that are suffering from the cyanobacterial bloom.
Right, but, you know, again, they're, they've been blind to this in this last four or five years of developing these guidelines. And the stuff was in there all about that. And they stripped it out. So it's not gonna be in the, in the guidelines, the rules. And then, you know, they're gonna just point to that and go like, hey, you know, this is a rule. You can't draw down six feet. That's not allowed.
Well, Mike, will you all talk about it tonight and start talking about a strategy for how to approach it this coming season?
Yeah, so I think we'll come up with what I just said. You know, we are in the process of developing an amendment with your, with your approval, of course, to try to do six feet. But if we come up with anything beyond that, you know, I'll let you guys know. And so that's kind of the drawdown, the cyanobacteria I mentioned, the milfoil. So now, of course, it's double the amount of dash work we have to do. Because they spent over half their time doing stuff they never had to do before, because there was never ever any milfoil in the three to six foot range. So now we've doubled our budget, right? So, you know, the sixty-two five really just barely covers Dash, you know, probably still Friends of Lake Garfield would be, give a little bit. But we, we pay for the lake scientists, you know, just because, I mean, it, I guess, select board, it doesn't really matter, I guess. How we do it, because that, you know, that budget item is gonna run out of money, no matter what we do. So if Hillary bills them and the Dash guys bill them, well, you're not gonna be able to pay someone. And it just creates a lot of problems and confusion. So we always make sure we pay, you know, we don't go above the budget for you guys. You won't get bills beyond what, you know, is in our budget. And yet, you know, just be aware that we're paying for all the stuff that couldn't be done. So we pay for the lake scientists, we pay for the cyanobacteria testing, you know, once a week. We pay for getting the orders of condition, you know, which. I talked to you guys about before, I mean, it, obviously, we know the town, you know, runs the beach and therefore the drawdown is their purview. But, you know, it's just, Mark, you guys try to pay everything that's due for that, but, you know, that doesn't even, that doesn't cover the drawdown really.
We did get up to sixty-two thousand this year.
I know, that's gonna be, all that's gonna be spent just by the Dash and by, you know, just by the Dash guys. And then there will be even extra Dash that Friends of Lake Garfield are gonna be paying for. And then there will be even extra Dash that Friends of Life Garfield are gonna be paying for. And there's nothing in the budget then, oh, there's no more money there for all the other things I just mentioned to you.
Maybe an anonymous person should deliver a large amount of pulled milfoil to the, uh, housing unit of the individuals involved in the new regulation.
Yeah, well, I guess, I don't know, the only thing that could happen is legislature, legis- the legislature to pass a, you know, a law that overrides their guidelines. I mean, um, you know, obviously, this is happening all, all around the state.
Bad science, so that's a problem.
It is a big problem. Well, if you read the Berkshire Eagle articles, you know, she did a great job. And I think she raised all those issues. And, you know, the headline was perfect. She said, you know, drawdown goes up and, uh, or goes out and then the weeds come in or something like that. So it was a great headline, but she, she wrote four pages. It was on the front page and she wrote four pages. And it was all, you know, she was nice enough to let me, you know, proof it, just to make sure all the facts were correct and everything. Uh, most reporters won't do that. But, you know, you see how many people she interviewed. She really did her work. And it was a, you know, a very well-done investigative, investigative piece. It was not just her, you know, going to somebody and say, hey, how's your milfoil or whatever? You know, she went to multiple sources and did her own digging and everything. So, um, you know, we, we could make it like a big public relations things on the newspaper, you know, embarrass them. We could go to the legislature, but, you know, I just give you the Stockbridge Bowl example of what happened. You know, unless.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah.
Mike, Frank, I got one question. I had, uh, someone forwarded me some pictures yesterday or the day before. It looks like oil spill on the lake. Have you, I can forward them to you. You don't know of any problem?
Oh, yeah, please, yeah, please, dude, you know where it was, where, where it was?
No, I don't. I'll find out. They didn't wanna give their name, you know, make it public.
I could tell you what it is. It's, it's from the motorboats. And, you know, like especially, you know, we don't have a, a marina on the lake. So you can imagine how people are putting gas in their massive boats there. You know, I don't know how they do it, but it sure is gonna spill, right?
Right.
So that's usually what I see. I see that thin layer on there. That's gasoline.
All right, I'll send you, you know, let me know your thoughts. I'll get back to them.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
We can't do a thing with electric boats, don't we, right?
No, you have to.
I think that.
They're not going to ban jet skis and then we're sold to, can't ban jet skis.
I think, I think we could, we could, we could ban power, motorboats. I think we could do that.
I, I think we, like, because Bear Town is state property and you can't use an electric, you have to use electric boats there.
Yeah, so it's the same thing all the time.
It's a, like, they let you do it because they wanna protect.
I don't think that would ever be a realistic happen, happen in Lake Garfield.
There's a lot of money on sitting in boats for a.
Yeah, it's true. A lot of bad money to do that.
That's why I leave.
All right, well, thanks for joining us, Mike. But it's our meeting, it's my ghost.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Um, go back, but Dennis left, but.
Yeah, well, Dennis was probably going to the Lake Garfield meeting.
Right.
They invited us to our meeting, but in the last couple of years, since we've been meeting on Tuesdays, we meet at six, they meet at seven.
Right.
If they, if we both need, it's.
Yeah.
We talked about maybe doing a joint meeting, maybe next month, but it depends, um. Thanks, Bill.
Was there anything that?
That was just kinda unanticipated, because Greg Carnesi reached out and said, we do a joint meeting. And I said, well, not really, but you could send somebody to come get us an update. Um, and maybe we'll do a joint meeting next week. Um, were we, did we finish encumbrances? I think we did.
Yeah, we're good.
I think so, yeah.
And so it sounds like we do have to put something on the fall town meeting to deal with them, like at least with the parks one?
Yeah, I'll, I'll probably check.
So I, I just pulled a, I pulled the report from Park, so.
Which, which report?
Uh, the details and tables for the whole year. Messy, to say the. I don't know what all these journal entries are.
Um, there was a couple that were, like, we, we did, I think I did a reclassification of.
Like, was it from when they messed up the whole, it wasn't you, it was Nicole and Eric. But like they added fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and then took away fifteen thousand?
I think at the very beginning, yes, things were messed up at the very beginning, so they had to straighten it all out. They like copied over from the previous year and it was like.
But the way I'm seeing it, each monitor used one thousand one hundred and forty-seven out of three thousand seven hundred and twenty-six.
Is there, is there an actual line item there for, um, but for lifeguards?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what it says is, is just wrong, but it says that there's five thousand and twenty dollars left in lifeguards, which is probably.
Well, there might be, but remember, it's not about the individual line items.
It technically is, but I know we have this.
It's the gross overall debt of the expenses and the.
No, it's not. It's not, but I don't know how else to say it, but we talked about it and.
I mean, if you wanna, if, what, what you're talking.
I can talk to Eric.
No, because what, what you're talking about is you're talking about each line item within a, 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 uh, what you're talking about, each line item within the department's budget actively, you can't go any higher or lower than that.
You can go lower, you can't go higher.
But if the bottom line budget, which is what we've talked about, if the bottom line budget for expenses is in the positive, a line item can go negative. That's what we've talked about.
No, so here we have, like, all these six thirties, six thirty Parks Commission.
Yep.
Forty-nine seventy-three, six thirty lifeguard payroll, thirty-two two fifty, like thirty-two two fifty is a cap for lifeguard payroll. I can talk to Eric about it.
No, because we've, we've talked about this in the budget. We've talked about the difference between the line item and the bucket, that the line items are.
But the line, this is the document. This is the Bible or the Torah or the Quran of town government.
We'll go, we'll go look at the, is the, um, is the, um, on, on the warrant, is, is the, on the warrant.
Yeah, not the warrant, right, or this is the minutes.
No, but, but on the warrant, it separates out the, the lifeguard.
Lifeguard, yeah. And we talked about combining it this year and we didn't base it for this exact reason.
Reason, and so the bottom line is if it's a separate item on the warrant.
Right.
Then it, it can't roll over to the other ones. You cannot draw on the lifeguard for the other things.
Yep.
And this is why, but it's.
Water under the bridge.
Water under the bridge, but.
So, so moving forward, so, so that specifically, this, this is what I had talked about in, in the whole budget process of if.
Well, when you combine lines, they're not combined, but when they're separated, they're separated.
Right.
The lines on the, the only line that can be overspent is.
And so, and so, and so what happens though, is that here, here's, here's where the, the problem in this situation happens. Is that the, that specific line item is not separated out from the parks budget. So when you go look at the parks budget, it's a line item within the budgets. It's not, it's not, it's not like, because if you were to separate it out and pull it out, it would, it wouldn't be six thirty.
I don't honestly see us using subaccounts effectively often, and I see them much more frequently causing problems.
I, I see, I see the opposite.
Well, nobody caused a five thousand dollar problem here.
Only, only because it's separated out in the warrant.
But look, here, it says Parks Lifeguard Payroll and Admin.
I understand, but what's, what's the, what's the, what's the, uh?
I'm gonna disagree with you.
Go, go look at the, go look at the warrant, what is happening.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the warrant and the, and the pay, the accounts pay.
So, so the, the.
Lifeguard payroll, thirty-nine thousand two hundred.
So what happens, so what happens with the budget, right? Is that the, the, um, in the case of the Parks Commission, right? We'll pretend it's ten thousand dollars. Inside of that, there are, that, inside of that bucket are five line items.
That's for Sarah, period.
Hold on, that includes that, that, that includes.
Well, that is poorly done by the county.
But, but, so what, what you would have to do.
That's poorly done.
But it's like that with every single, if you went down through and looked at like the grants, the grant writer is the same way. The grant writer is under, the, the grant writer and the grant writer expenses are under the select board, one twenty-two, but it's voted separately.
Yeah, so we, they, we did get, I think actually we need to have a meeting with Eric, like, and go over this. Because there is a chance that I'm wrong on this, but I really don't think that it's.
So I, I understand what you're saying.
If I'm not wrong, we need to talk to Eric and be like, Eric, we can't, we gotta account, set up the accounts properly and then not overspend.
So, so, but what you're gonna have to do, what you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to go out for grant writer. If you wanna, if you wanna vote one separately on those items on the warrant, then it needs to have its own account. So instead of being under one twenty-two, it's gotta be under si- six ninety-five.
Oh, okay, I'm gonna make a counterargument, but I see your point. This is my counterargument. To my knowledge, the items in the select board budget have never been overspent. The parks has frequently had, so, so just let me finish, because I know you think you have the counterargument, but.
No, I don't.
What I, what I think that Justin is getting at, what I think Justin is getting at is if those, if we created a system where those were correctly separated out, as was our intent when we made them separate line items, this overspending of the lifeguard budget could not have happened. And the reason it happened was that they thought they had more money than they actually had, so they spent it on something they shouldn't have bought because they thought they had it, but then they ended up short. But if they were separated out and the lifeguard money was a separate thing, then they would have known they didn't have it. And they wouldn't have spent it because they would have been zeroed out and couldn't have spent it. And the reason for making them separate is so that they can more easily track it, so they are less inclined to overspend, which has historically been an issue. It isn't an issue with the grant writer. It is an issue with some other accounts.
I, I hear what you're saying, but the only reason why the select board budget doesn't go over budget is because the select board doesn't spend a whole heck of a lot of money out of a budget.
And when we do, we pay attention to whether we have the money.
So.
We make a decision based on whether the money exists or not.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
I think that, I think that if, what, to what Justin is saying, though, if you're going to separate out and vote individually on something on the warrant, it needs to be in its own budget.
Well, you know, that's not our problem. That's a common problem, frankly. That's, they need to figure it out.
No, I, I.
And actually, it's not your problem. It's their problem.
Yeah.
And we have been covering their problems for too long. And I actually think he's a pretty good accountant, but it's not our problem. We did the town meeting warrant like we're supposed to. It's not your problem. It's their problem for setting up the accounts wrong. And, and I know, like, I don't know this, I don't know the endgame yet.
I, I, I don't, I don't necessarily think the accounts were set up wrong.
Well, they are, because they went below.
They overspent? And they weren't allowed to overspend?
Yes, they, they did overspend.
Yes, like, like, they don't have the money.
At the end, it's like, it's actually less than that because, it's, it's less than that because there just wasn't enough to cover the whole invoice. So they, they had money left over, but not enough to cover that, that. It's not like they were zero and there was forty-nine hundred dollars left. They had, you know, a thousand dollars or something like that left, but not enough to cover.
I'm gonna reiterate, was it a separate amount? It would have been clearer how much they did have.
It, it, it is a separate amount.
And yet.
But you see, that's just it. It is its own separate line item. And yet, yes, they did spend more on another line item, which at the end of the day, brought the whole budget line item down. They didn't see that, that budget, that, that invoice for, that invoice for the, for the, um, lifeguards didn't come in and didn't get applied in time.
Right, but if they were separate and it couldn't.
It is separate. I'm also, well, I know, I can show you, Nikki, yeah, Nikki.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, we had this with the library where we, we needed to, but we had a, a transfer. We knew what our picture was. I, I think for a couple of parks committee, they, they, not recently, but they, they weren't paying attention to what.
They're not paid staff. They're not paid staff. I mean, they're all volunteers, right?
Yes, how are we?
No, you're not all volunteers. There's paid staff in the life.
That's right, that, that, that guy, like, he gets paid.
So, no, but frankly, I mean, it's something that we deal with, I think, with volunteers in part because what expectations can you have of volunteers? Not that they don't do a great job in many ways, but you can't say you messed up and you didn't stick to your budget.
And the whole thing is, but, 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 what I was trying to say is, I, you know, not, not this year.
Couple of years ago, Parks Committee, and somebody came in and, and brought up this hockey tournament. Hey, that's a great idea. Let's do it. And somebody else in the same meeting, yeah, let's do this. And they weren't thinking of cost or anything. They go, this is a great idea. We'll do this. And then that was when they didn't have money to fix the ball field.
Right.
Just because they just don't.
Well, the ball field was also like ten thousand dollars. They wanted, right?
Yeah, but they, they, they let it go for years and, and, yeah.
There was the procurement thing too, and we put out the bid and then.
Yeah.
It was a map. I mean, look, what do we expect the volunteers to? Now, one thing I think I would actually use, is we gotta have Eric maybe do a class. And he did this once like two or three years ago, on how to read the reports. Because I've been on this slideboard for four years and I'm just now figuring out. Red, Gavin, ending. It's like backwards.
Yeah, it is backwards.
So, so, so I think honestly, and department heads can be invited, volunteers can be invited. The most people look, you know, like, that's a foreign language shredder.
Yeah.
But two things need to happen. One is the slideboard and the town administrator and the account need to all get on the same page about how it all works for this upcoming year. Like, that's water under, for the upcoming year. And then two is, it might be worth doing a class on how to read, and I actually don't think Eric himself did it. I think Lisa Kelly did it, who is the predecessor to.
Nicole or Mary or something.
But it's actually, and it can be optional, but especially the big departments with, with, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollar budgets, they should be able to read the reports, and I don't always know that everyone does. And it's no fault to them. They're confusing.
There's only, there's, there's only, there, there's only few departments that actually, I think, really look at them. And those are, those are just, those are the bigger.
I would go, because I have questions on the way they do their reports.
You know, the whole system.
I'm not gonna disagree with you.
I, 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 I would disagree with you, because I, I.
Well, I also, I'm not defending the system. I'm just saying, here's what it is, right? Like, I'm not saying, well, this is a great system. I'm just saying.
That's my team, maybe system.
Yeah, pretty much.
I think they, they.
If Eric comes in, I would.
I don't know how, uh, I'm reading this and looking at all Yankee Restrooms, Gary O'Brien. I'm not seeing a lot of discretionary expenditures. There was, uh, Mr. Dingling ice cream.
Yeah.
But there really wasn't a lot of discretionary expenditures.
Um, they, they, there was, they, they did a lot with the, uh, there were some that they did at the, um, up at the, um, the beach with the, um, the electric, the electricity.
But what, what was that under?
Uh, what was gonna be?
Was it actually the, the fifty-five eighty or something?
Is that, that one was, there was for the fifty-dollar, we did.
What was the vendor's name?
Uh, off the top of my head, I can't remember.
Because I'm not, I'm, you know.
And so it's the, uh, Gary O'Brien Yankee Restroom. It's the, I think the fifty-five eighty, just the other expenses, that was heavy in the negative.
Yankee Restroom.
When was that, when was that report run?
Um, the June report.
Uh, see, you can't go by that.
July sixteenth. It came out July sixteenth.
Oh, July sixteenth one? Uh, that, that would be.
I mean, I think that I knew her.
Right, no, 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 that, that, that would be the last one, so, so.
So they didn't quite close out the books, but they're close to it. And I'm just not seeing, I see National Grid for.
And that one might not have, uh.
Town of Colin for one thousand dollars?
Yeah, that was for, um, I had to go look at that one. That, that was for, um, that was for the, uh, oh, that was for, uh, um, um, details. I think that was for, they, they paid for police details at, uh, the rink, or at the ice skating.
Oh.
Why didn't we need a police detail on the ice skate?
Yeah. At the, at the hockey.
Well, at the hockey.
Oh, at the hockey.
So, I mean, I think that's gonna be.
Hockey, I remember, fight.
You know?
There, there was, there was those sorts of things.
That, that was, okay, I didn't remember. I saw it, fine.
Yeah, maybe, was Brian working for Colin? That's, it's, oh, Charles Bootleer.
That's, that's the electrician.
Uh, Charles, so that's twenty-seven hundred. That did a cent.
That was, that was.
That did a cent. Oh, yeah.
What was it? Why did he go one way and then the other?
Yeah, there was a second one.
Because probably multiples.
But didn't the first one go that?
I think they're heading to Canada border in case we can't recognize those.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's.
And that was just traffic.
I thought it was somebody.
Solar down, so I did it first and then I was like, that's a plane? What the heck?
Okay. So, oh, well, and part of it was, wait, we have two huge expenses to Sterling. So one was the kayak stickers and then did the five years of kayak stickers?
Yeah.
So you did one, but why did one, one thousand ninety-five?
We have, that, that's what, um, that, that's something that's. We have, that, that's what, um, that, that's something that has to get fixed.
Okay.
Yeah, because if there was one in there, they, they had like a double payment.
Okay.
There's two one thousand ninety-fives in there?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would take a thousand and ninety-five off.
Yeah, yeah.
So, maybe that will be as over. So how long are they over?
Uh, they were only over like two thousand dollars, just like that, at the end, at the end of it. I, I can't remember off my head.
It's hard, because you have to remind each one, right?
Right.
Because they were, they had twenty-five hundred in beach monitor that they left. Spring, fall cleanup, they left sixty-five hundred.
Well, it's hard to tell, because it might have been, some of that, they might have.
Well, I mean, it, it, it all, well, you know, right, it parts.
So they get confused themselves.
Lifeguard, they left five thousand, but parks contracted, they overspent ten thousand eight hundred.
Though.
And then, uh.
Because that's why we're trying to actually look at those accounts, trying to straighten them out.
They overspent six seventy-five.
Because of, I think they were getting confused when I was talking to Tom about which account to put, like, which is spring cleanup, fall cleanup, the regular lawn mowing, those negative, those go into positive.
Can we do something, because this might make it easier for them? Let's, instead of having all these weird subaccounts and contracted services, let's just use the accounts on the warrant. Beach monitor, park commission, lifeguard, and lawn maintenance. So if it's lawns, anything to do with lawns, it wasn't lawns.
We're doing that.
Lifeguard, beach monitor, anything else within person.
We're cutting it down.
Yeah.
We're, the only thing that, the only thing that I've asked is that we separate out like telecommunications or in electricity.
Yeah.
Just so we can see what those things are.
I mean, it's fine, that's good stuff to know, but when it gets so confusing, to where we are where we are, it's not helping anybody, so. So, so all that one.
I mean, I see your point, it's just, it, it's not really exactly what's in. If we can't even, like, at some point, it has to be able to be figured out or in this Thanksgiving.
Oh, this little guy at my house eating stuff.
We see him again.
He used to stop by this morning.
The bear.
Monday morning.
Yeah, that bear came up to my kitchen window last week, I bet, it's the same bear.
You sure it was that bear?
I'm sure it was.
It's like, it's not that big.
It's not that big, yeah, and like looked right in the window at me. It was in the garden.
Well, I opened up my bedroom window the other, it was Monday morning or this morning, and he was right there on the patio.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, he didn't really run away either.
Did you see him?
No, I heard he ran out.
I've taken pictures of him, I would go ahead and.
I, well, you know, sometimes, you know, throw bacon grease in the water, not anymore, but, and not recently.
Not anymore.
Miriam, this is like a few years back, but Miriam comes running in in the middle, like, for me in the middle of the night, it was quite late, and screaming, there's a bear at the window, and I'm like, what are you talking? Just, you're just, I go out and sure enough, right at the screen window, the bear's like, why? I'm like, the hell it is, I only got two big cast iron pans, I'm like, bang, the bear was like, ah, it goes running off. Like, not my window, baba, you are not coming in.
I left, I left cookies cooling on a counter, and I think I came down here for a meeting.
Good night.
And, and when I came home, there's a, there was a screen right by the door where I came in through the window, and that screen was, he didn't get in the house, but he, he tried. And I go, never leave cookies.
What kind of cookies?
You couldn't throw them in the car. They could have cooled here.
Bring the cookies.
I'll remember that next time.
All right, well, we figured that out, but seriously, maybe we go meet with Eric. Or something. So that we all know.
This is so busy, anyway.
It really is.
Oh, my God.
I don't think we need to do any updates on the community center grant, I think they even should have a meeting with Dennis, though. You need a Dennis, really.
Okay.
Get it on the books to nail down, but we don't know until it goes out the bid what the real cost is.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, fire department updates.
Uh, Matt and Sean today, uh, we're gonna start tracking the numbers, um, you know, to really understand the cost of the operation. Went over what he's talking to the three other towns, like, uh, you know, some kind of agreement, but he thinks that's a ways off. He talked some time about what's happening in San Jose Field, and they need to get their, it straightened out, but we didn't even do anything with them. So we both agreed, we look at the numbers, we look at, you know, variable expense, the fixed expense, try to put a cost to what, what we know, so. We talked just a little bit, you know, when we, he doesn't believe the other, uh, operations have the, that kind of detail that we have, you know.
What other?
Well, like expenses, like what their expenses are.
What, what other operations?
They're like that, or other tasks.
Cars.
What do you mean?
They, they don't, you know, the fire chief may not do the budget, you know, something like.
But you know, Sanesville does purchase orders. So everything over like, I think it's five hundred dollars, needs to have, get approved before it's purchased. So in some ways.
Well, we talked about, because when, you know, when I asked him, I said, have you, have the fire chiefs talked about sharing expenses?
What kind of expenses?
Well, like, if we're, if we're a full-time staff, and we have a larger fixed cost, but we're making multiple runs to these other towns, and we have a regional agreement, is there a way, well, you know, you know, is there a way to look at, is it a fixed cost? That say, okay, you're gonna contribute this much, or, you know, we have to go through the detail, but we don't have enough data now to say what our fixed costs are. So I told him I would take, when we come out with the first general ledger, I'd break it down, and then be able to sit down with him and Chris. I still need to follow up with Chris, um, and so we can start taking a look at that. Because I, you know, I did ask him, I said, has anybody talked about shared costs, or, you know, so.
I, I think it's a really good question, I mean, it's something I've been pondering, like, what mechanisms are there for share, if you're working with other towns in an active way? When it was just like mutual aid, it was one thing, but now you've got a full-time department, and full-time ambulance, and some other things.
Yeah, I think we.
And at some point, you have to reconsider how you're sharing those costs, and it's.
And then everybody, it needs to have transparency. You know, we need to put it on the table, this is what we're spending.
It needs transparency, and we need to understand what our expenditures are, but we also need to think about, what is it? Even if you, let's say, know what those costs are. The question I have then is, okay, how do you go about coming up with a reasonable, um, a system that's both fair and operational to share costs with other towns?
Well, it's gotta be discussed.
Yes, it does, but I'm just, I think you have to think about, how do you do it?
I, I know, but, but we, we agree there needs to be more discussion.
Yeah.
Like, they ran last night, early this morning, down to that box truck that ran into the farming, that's all the way down Eighth, by, plus the, it's way down there.
Yeah.
And, you know, they were the first vehicle, you know, the others didn't have, they had a person, or, you know, the chief.
Under Sanesville, they only had one person on the truck.
Yeah, but they, we provided the, you know, the, the truck, the, you know, the stuff that you do what they have to do, because it ran itself whole and into the river. So, um, it's, it was a good conversation, you know, so, you know, I wanna start now, because it's the starting of the fiscal year.
Plus, if, you know, plus it's a new situation, a full-time department, and it's completely appropriate to try to come up with a way to do a good job of tracking what it actually costs on the ground.
Right.
And we may have to tweak it as we go, is.
No, you, you know, say, correct.
Understand better, of course, but I think it's a really good idea, the more clarity we have, the better. I'm, I'm glad they're having a work. Yeah, Sanesville, I think is a mess.
It's a mess. It's almost calm for the Berkshire Eagle.
And I, I know that they've been working on memorands and understanding with both Otis and.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about where each township is, and, you know, New Marlville's got some things going. Otis, you know, he feels like they're taking it serious, and, and, um, John Fields has been in contact with Sean, so. That could be a flag on the wall.
I know, I, um, I think, oh, and I did have a conversation with Sean also, um, and he says he has a very clear explanation of why we did not pursue a stock truck, um, and there's multiple reasons.
Yeah, but I talked to him too, I, I, the way he explained it to me, he, you have options to list. You know, when I think of a custom truck, that you have to engineer something. You know, it's like an option, the cab size, you know, the, you know, they give you like three options or whatever for the height of the cab, things like that, it's not, he went through and took different options that he thought would help meet his needs going down the road, but I'm not sure if I would say it's a custom truck, because you're not at, you're not paying for additional engineering, or to do something that's totally out of the norm. You know, that you could go to them and say, I need this part, they're gonna be able to have it. You know, it's, it's sort of like when you go to a car, you know, I wanna move, or I don't wanna move, you know. It's just, you know, there's a lot of different options.
One of the things he mentioned to me, which I thought was very interesting, was that most of the stock trucks apparently don't come with any cab safety features, like airbags.
Yeah, well, that's what he told me that.
Injury for firefighters in trucks that don't have that equipment. Which I, I think that's a pretty serious thing.
All right, so he told me the same thing, that the, you know, if they're using like a Peterbilt and putting it on a cab, versus they have their own cab, which they make and is engineered, you're not saying start from scratch. They put the safety stuff in, the airbags and stuff like that.
But anyway, he's prepared.
Yeah, he told me, we talked a little bit about that last one, I talked to him.
You may know your own, I'd rather you back.
Also, on that.
Yep.
Town manager updates.
Um, I just have a question, I, I think I, we talked about it, when we're hiring fire department staff outside of the, um, police, outside of the chief and deputy chief, they're not being appointed by, it's, it's being hired, they're hired directly from them, okay, that's what I.
They gotta do ethics.
Yeah, they do all the other stuff, it's just.
You gotta employ him, look.
Yeah, it's just. On your side, yep. Um, I did speak with, um, so, um, they, they have started their forty-eight ninety-six ships, if you don't have the, with Sean, and, uh, working on getting some, figuring out getting data and stuff on the runs and stuff.
What are they doing since they only have two people?
They're kinda covering the, the, the fifth and the sixth ship with, you know, um, themselves and with, um, kind of like the old way.
Yeah.
You know, there's just someone around, if they get a call, they, they try and make it there, so, in that sense. Uh, um, I did talk with, we had a talk with Matt Lundstedt from CEI, I think is who it is, um, about Sanesville Road Culvert Project. Um, that's starting to move forward, we're hoping to get everything done, um, and out for bid in, um, in the next couple of weeks, and that, uh, all that stuff can get done, put out the bid, and then have people, um, have somebody within the middle of August and really start working on it. It's getting close, my concern is, uh, school, because I believe there, the school bus does goes down Sanesville Road. Um, so we may have a short detour for a week or two, because what they can do is there's, um, they can actually, they can phase it. So the first phase will be essentially tearing out the old, uh, culvert, and they can replace the, uh, replace it with new culvert, and then cover it, and put like steel plate over it, so that, once they get that done, then they can allow, that, that will allow, um, vehicles, school buses, trucks to pass through.
And what's phase two?
There, I believe that this, there was a school bus that went down there, down Sanesville Road, there were some kids down there. I don't know how far.
I know there's students, but I didn't think any of them were in Southern Berkshire District, and that, it went up there, but I don't really know for sure.
Yeah, so I have to call.
Maybe we should check with Southern Berkshire.
That's what I'm gonna do, I don't know. I'm gonna call Southern Berkshire, I'm also, I don't think anybody from Farmington River is down there. I, I know Farmington River comes and stops, usually stops there, but they go to the community center now. So I, I, I'm gonna have to call, my plan is to call Southern Berkshire and see if there's anybody down there, or do four two, right? But did, does do four want it? Does do four?
I don't know what happened.
I don't know what happened.
So I'll, I'll call Southern Berkshire and see, but you're right, if there's no one down there to get picked up, then it's just an issue for the people that live down there.
Right, which is an issue too.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah.
So if they, if they went with the, what you were just describing, and put in like a, a, a new pipe and a plate, what's phase two?
Phase two is building out the sides, they had walls, I guess, for the, of the sides of, essentially, and doing.
And then pulling a plate and finishing the road.
Yeah, and finishing the road, and repaving the road, and, um, you know, um, angling the, the, the sides and all that. They have to put a beaver deceiver in upstream, ComCom has them to do that.
Are they gonna have to close the road entirely for a day?
For more than a day.
So they could do two one-way detours, down New Marlboro, Wallace Hall, and then the other one, down Chestnut Hill.
Yeah, well.
And then you don't run into problems on either of those roads, that really shouldn't have people coming up and down.
Exactly. Yeah, so they're, they're gonna use, they're, they're gonna use Wallace Hall at this one.
Which one is Wallace?
Wallace Hall.
But you know, they should send the other half of the people up Cronk and down Chestnut Hill. There was Wallace Hall, you didn't have two-way traffic.
I had no.
I don't know how, I'll, I'll talk to them about it, because I did, so, well, Rob Hoos mentioned a different way, he had some other.
That's the different way.
He had some other way, that's what I thought might have been the different way, but I'll have, I'll talk to them about Wallace, I don't think we do two, two lanes.
I mean, you could, but there's not even appropriate guardrails.
Yeah, well, you know.
We need to learn how to drive.
Which one is Wallace Hall?
It goes from Sanesville Road to New Marlboro Road, and it comes over near the gold farm.
Yeah. If you go down Sanesville Road.
And it really, like, it's, it's not, doesn't have guardrails, I mean, one time, I accidentally drove Rescue Nine into a tree, because there's a tree that comes like, it starts on the very edge of the road, and it comes like this, and there was a bike race, biker that got, they were doing a bike race, and he's like, so there's a biker coming the other way, and I was starting on the road, but there's a tree that comes. So like, to think of two-way traffic.
On that road.
I know.
If you couldn't have a biker, that's fair.
Well, I wonder how they would do that, they'd have to, they'd have to do it.
Well, you just have signs that when you're coming one way, so go, go, go Cronk to Chestnut Hill.
Yeah.
And then the other way, you could say, go back, you know, just the, the opposite.
Stay home for days.
I have to talk to them, I'll, I'll talk to them again.
Okay.
Um, and the only other, uh, update I have are those, um, uh, those lovely vests that are behind you. Um, there's, uh, they're trying to figure out how to, that, that means accounts on Agen is working to, uh, put together vests for walking that, uh, people will actually wear.
Twenty-five mile per hour.
We thought about, we thought about, and they thought about putting, actually Monterey stuff, they, they have, they have some.
Is that a legal twenty-five mile per hour vest?
I think we have to put the state to that. Um, they, there, there, there may be something different that they're putting on it, but they're trying to figure out a way so that they could give, so people might actually be interested in wearing them, you know how people like to wear stuff that says things like where they're from, that people might actually wear those, because last year they handed out about ninety of them.
And nobody wore them. So.
I wear them.
You can, you can pass this along, like, it may not be the issue for people.
I've never seen you.
But when I wear this vest, I definitely fall off my shoulders.
Yeah, they have to kind of.
They fall off my shoulders, and there's no way to keep them closed, and I, I actually once, like, intentionally sewed on extra Velcro.
Yeah.
It just was.
There are issues.
Right, I don't know if other people have that problem, but I can tell you, it keeps me from wearing the hung vest. I mean, I'm not walking on the road.
Yeah.
But I'm walking in the woods, and there's still good reason to wear it.
So anyway, that's what those are up there for.
That's all I have.
Kind of like it.
Do we have anything else?
Uh, I had one of those nice group meetings on the school system.
Oh.
And, um.
They got what they wanted.
The superintendent filed an open law complaint against Sheffield because the, the meeting agenda wasn't detailed enough.
Well, it was all Sheffield Slackboard there?
Not just one, there's, uh, Egremont wasn't there.
So then why did they go through them?
No, there was all Sheffield, when that, when they superintendent.
What public body was meeting?
Slackboard and the superintendent.
A different meeting.
Yeah, different meeting, not this meeting. This wasn't a public.
So this is some drama between outgoing superintendent and the Slackboard.
Drama, 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 drama. Yish.
One of the other. So they're gonna, you know, meet with the, they're supposed to interim superintendent about communication and what they want.
Do they select an interim?
They're, no, they, it was one night, the meeting was, last, uh, week, two weeks ago. It was, um, they, they were just getting close to they had three or four candidates, you know. You have to be registered with the state or licensed by the state to do it, so. That's what I'm telling.
I do sometimes wonder what, why the Sheffield Slackboard. Thinks that they're the school committee. There's a Slackboard that happens to be the town which the schools.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know, but, uh, New Marlborough has had complaints about it, it wasn't just out.
Why did they go to the school committee? Talk to your school committee rep.
They, well, okay, but okay, you're like Egremont went to talk to their two registered people and they got a letter from those school boards. Legal saying you can't talk to them.
What?
Yeah.
Was that about this lockdown?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's the minor.
It's, yeah, but you can ask questions about procedures, everybody knows. It's a minor, I mean, you're not gonna, they're not gonna give.
Can't get the name.
If you can't take those details and what's going on.
Well, we're getting new superintendent.
Yeah.
Which will have their own problems because people.
Which, which weird to me only is that Beth was actually there for nine years and I didn't hear a complaint for eight and a half.
Yeah. Exactly.
The other thing about, did you see Tom's email about, uh, he told me on the golf course where he sent to you about the, uh. The, uh, baseball field October fourth, the guy.
I told him it's their, it's their, uh, problem.
It's okay, that's fine, alright.
And.
They've done other stuff there before, right? They've done other.
Well, so the Little League asks to play, there's, there's always Sunday morning and they just kind of get it because they have always gotten it and. It's like if you show up and play softball, you can play it.
But this is like a birthday party.
This is a birthday party.
If they.
The guys from California.
Like wants to reserve it, so.
They're not really, I told him, I said, there's no staff, so there's no enforcement of who is. If there's some little kids playing on it, you can't kick them off, I mean, you can ask them that you want to do it, but.
Yeah, like.
It's a public park and we don't, we have a, it's not like we're in Great Barrier with the Little League where we have a schedule and people working and.
Right.
It's just kind of.
Catch and catch kind of.
Yeah. And if they, if parks commissions decide, we want to do a reservation system, they got, they can figure out what that looks like or do it on a case by case basis, but. It's their.
I put the price tag so high that they wouldn't want.
Well, maybe I could be the five thousand dollar player bill.
I tell you, did you look them up on the internet?
Oh, yeah.
It's a production company from California, it's like it's.
They're having a birthday party for a day?
No, they're, there's a birthday party.
Oh, jeez.
At first I thought it's a Tom, Tomlin, but I'm like, but isn't that the, isn't that the, um, coach for the Pittsburgh Steelers?
Psycho, Mike Tom.
My Tom.
Yeah, I looked at it, I was like.
Um, do you want to bring up any transportation stations?
Yeah, yeah, we're thinking of, uh, having a transportation committee meeting, put that together to have some conversations about pricing, staffing. Pay as you throw. Swap shop, even things, there's a lot of stuff that's happening up there, there's really.
Man, I, I.
Kind of not anybody that's really overseeing and making some decisions up there. So, and, you know. It's kind of a strange situation that we collect money, that is, we, we collect money for things. That we've already have in our budget to, to haul. So for example, if somebody comes up and we, we charge them seventy-five dollars or whatever, twenty-five dollars to leave a, uh, we, we charge a hundred and twenty dollars to go there, right? It's that, that money.
For a sticker.
For, for a sticker, that money is really not going towards the transfer station. So if someone comes with a refrigerator and it's like, oh, that cost you thirty-five bucks, that money doesn't go towards the transfer station.
So it's a problem.
The, 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 the question is, why do we charge?
What do you mean, why do we charge?
I, I have, I.
Wait, I'm, I'm a little confused.
There's several different.
I'm confused, I'm confused.
No, I'm, I'm, it's not that I'm confused, it's just that we collect. And now, it's just something I want to have a conversation about, we collect monies for the transfer station that aren't for the transfer station.
It's if they go into free cash.
It just goes.
They cannot, that's all.
And so the issue is, why do we, you know, so, some people ask, why are we charging so much?
Well, it's not really that they go into free cash, we tax less because of it. Because we know we're gonna get, but, but we estimate we're gonna get a hundred thousand dollars from the transfer station.
Yes.
And when they set the tax rate, we collect that money because we know that's gonna come in from fridges and, yeah, stickers.
Right, but that's not what we tell people.
I, I'm gonna make it several different arguments though, like, one is, I, and this is why we've had conversations about. Pay as you throw in different ways, uh, the problem with doing pay as you throw is twofold. Like, I'm in support of it because I think people, the only way in our society you change people's habits is if it costs them money. Right, there are always people who will do it anyway. And there are always people who will not do it no matter what because they'll just pay it. But the great majority of people, if they have, if it's going to cost them more money, think about. When it went to five cents for a can, people's, a lot of people stopped throwing out cans and a lot of other people started picking up the cans other people were throwing out, right? Now, five cents isn't enough and people are throwing cans and bottles again, right? So people's habits change when there's a direct relationship between their habit and what it costs them. The strongest tool you have in our society to get people to change their behavior. So for me, part of the reason of doing it is for people to make an association between the items they're throwing out or. In fact, purchasing sometimes with what it costs to dispose of it. And I think that's the strongest argument for pay as you throw and, you know, we could, that's a long discussion, I would say. If we go that, but that would involve an enterprise fund and a big campaign to educate people about why they're gonna do it and get buy-in from the community and honestly, I'm not. Like with fire permit and emergency services, I don't know that I have the bandwidth to invest in that. Roger's making the argument that the money people pay for stickers, et cetera, doesn't go directly with, yeah.
Wait, I'm a little confused because it's almost like, so I used to do a little lawn mowing business and sometimes I would, uh. Buy lawn seed for somebody and said, hey, give me twenty bucks because I, I grow a hardware for it, it costs nineteen ninety-five. So they give me twenty dollars, but I go take that twenty dollars and I go buy pizza.
That's different.
No, it's kind of the same, money's fungible. And I asked for twenty dollars because it cost twenty dollars, when we asked for thirty-five dollars to get rid of the mattress, it's because it cost us thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, but we.
It's not that same.
Yeah, but we, we, we've already paid for that thirty-five dollars by, in the budget.
Yeah, but it's whole in our tax base then by.
No.
That's another revenue source, that, that's, again. So, so.
No, 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 because you go to collect the money in the budget and the taxes.
Yeah.
They take the whole six million. And then they subtract.
Yeah.
How much they track for transfer station fees?
I have to, yeah.
It's like eighty thousand, something like that, yeah. So we don't collect that much taxes because we, we're counting on it.
But.
So if all of a sudden we didn't have sticker fees and, and refrigerator fees and mattress fees.
Well, that's what I mean, that's what I mean, that, 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 that money, no, I, I understand, that money we get, we're collecting for free cash. Because to, to your point, if I go, if I have a list of, of a hundred thousand dollars and in the warrant, it's all being paid by free cash, if I don't have free cash, the way I have to.
It's actually not going to free cash, that's not a statement, that's a statement.
It's, it's going, it, it ends up somewhere.
It goes into the general fund, right, but we don't tax on that amount.
Right.
It, it could just as well be saying we, we're, that we're paying, you know, the library salary from it because it's all in the same pot.
But at the end of the day, we, we brought in more than what our, we brought in more with that money than what our overall budget was, so there's leftover monies at the end of the year, which are. Free cash that we use to buy things that we would norm, if we didn't have that money, we would have to raise.
There are not any more free cash than when we have Highway Four on fill for half the year and there's thirty thousand dollars. It's all, it's all free cash, I understand that you overspend or underspend.
Here, here's, here's my issue that I.
I don't know.
Is that.
This is crazy.
We, we throw, we throw so much stuff out. At the transfer station that we collect no money for because.
Municipal solid waste.
You know, couches, chairs, um.
What do you mean, we paid for demo debris.
Nope.
We don't pay for dumpsters?
We, we do, but what happens is people are busy doing stuff, someone, this just happened a couple of weeks ago, someone drove in, dropped off a television and a couch and drove out.
Oh, no, 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 it was never like that and honestly, I don't go as much as I used to, but I've brought a lot of the items that you paid for.
Yep.
And it was, it's never been like that and I paid more for the few items that I have brought in the last few years than ever before.
And so that's my issue.
So you're saying we have thieves?
Well, we have people drop it.
Well, stop, call the police, take the plate, call the police.
It happens like out of the blue.
I've never seen that before, or heard about that.
Just, yeah.
It's just so busy, they're all, they're two attendants.
Sometimes they get, there's been several occasions where there's one person up there. And I told you about this in a, a week, a couple of weeks ago. You know, it's Saturday morning, the other person shows up late, the one guy's running around doing it all, he's not looking back there.
There's gotta be two people and if there's a thief, call the police.
Well, they don't see those thieves.
Put up a camera.
And people are dropping all stuff.
No, but seriously, because I've never heard about this before and I'm not saying it never, ever, ever, ever happened, it happens a lot.
But, well, that's a problem that we gotta deal with, we, we.
There, there's actually, if you talk about thieves, there's a second one, which is people dumping things, not even during transfer station hours.
So just leaving stuff.
During the transfer station.
Cameras.
Dumping them on their road.
We're doing cameras, I mean, I don't know what else to do other than say we're gonna put on cameras, because that's insane. So we, we're, we're, we're throwing away a lot, we're, we're throwing away a lot of stuff. How many people are dumping couches and running?
Yeah, but, well.
Do we need more signs that say, like, you will be arrested if you don't talk to the.
Kathleen would like to put a sign up that reads clean, unbroken, usable, identifiable items only please at the swap shop.
Well, what we also used to tell the attendants is if there's no swap shop attendance, you have to pay to get rid of it.
There, there's, there's no one up there doing that, right?
So we gotta do training and we have to figure some stuff out, maybe we gotta do cameras and that's what. But these are not historical problems, these are new problems.
These are new.
And I, I think, I, I don't disagree because I think, uh, my, from everything that I've sort of heard historically, there was a, a different, you know. Uh, there were different people that were working up there that had a different view of how to work there and that they had left and now there's.
Well, to be honest, it was Beth and Dave and they started with the new, and they had it down and Beth ran the swap shop while Dave ran the thing. And no one got by there without anything. And then we had a little bit of a revolving door. Frankly, and now we, we are where we are.
And I think that's what's happened is we've had a little bit of a revolving door and there's, uh, there's no, and they're busy. Helping people unload their vehicles to, to put stuff and there's no one person other than a volunteer, which I don't think it's fair on a volunteer for them to stand there and say, no, you can't put that stuff there.
Well, especially if they're only there for a few of the hours.
No, the attendants need to back up the volunteers, which is what they always did and I, I mean, I used to get. It's annoying because you bring like a nice thing that definitely belongs in the swap shop and they say, no, you gotta put it in trash and pay for it.
Yeah.
Because the swap shop times aren't here, but that's the right way to do it.
Yeah, so I think what's happening is it gets busy. At, it gets busy at the point where people are emptying their vehicles and it's like one after the other after the other, right? And then people are then driving forward to where by the swap shop and they're just emptying things out of their car at the swap shop when there's nobody there.
The only other thing that we could do.
Well, one thing we thought of.
Is change the route like it used to be.
The other thing is we, if we have the money in the budget and Roger thinks we do, we could see if we can hire someone to work the swap shop. During the summer when the transfer station's open. So that if, if we're not running into there being no one at the swap shop to help people make those calls or to say, no, that's not acceptable, it's too broken or. No, I mean, look, I would never leave a stuffed chair or a couch in the swap shop because. That night when it, they're due, it's gonna get ruined, like you have a stuffed item, either throw it out or take it to Goodwell, right? Because they'll put it inside, we can't have. Things that can't sit outside and people leave that stuff all the time and then it gets trashed and it has to get thrown out. It's trash and it gets trashed, right? So.
You know, we had somebody that came and dropped off a bureau, like a big bureau, and it was covered in a tarp. And someone came and was like, I'll take that, so they put, sold on it, right? And they were supposed to come back. Saturday to pick it up and they didn't come back and they didn't go back Sunday to pick it up. So now it's Monday and it's been sitting there for two weeks.
But is it covered in, it's covered in tarp, but. So you know what Beth and Dave also used to do, they'd say, if no one takes that, then, uh.
It's a.
Then you gotta pay for it.
Well.
It's a little complicated.
I have my own, I, I think, I think that everything that gets left there should be paid for.
If it's big, sure.
Yeah, if you, if you.
If you otherwise would pay for it.
Yeah, it should, it should be.
Well, that's hard though because then it disincentivizes like passing along some really nice furniture.
Yeah.
To, I go home.
But we've had to, unfortunately, we've had to throw out furniture over the past month.
It came for.
It's not that it didn't get paid for, it's just somehow it ended up there, especially over stuffed furniture and then it rained.
Well, we never put stuff out that was stuffed, if, they used to do a little bit of, we'll put it inside, like a mattress container.
And you got there.
What is that in the morning?
Shit, it was a zoom up there.
Well, more except stuffed stuff, things.
Yeah, well, the other thing is.
That people don't wanna hear no, but it's nice.
Oh, my God.
I know.
Well, but it's like.
Maybe the police up there.
Are we getting the police up there?
On Saturday night, you know, the guy who wanted a piece of furniture, he couldn't pick it up, you know, the, the attendants are trying to help him load his car and it was like, you know. It, it was, it wasn't an unfit, you know?
The dog down there.
Um, we can't have one attendant, that's not enough. Maybe the police need to go out there and start putting some law and order into that place and maybe we need to do cameras, which I hate cameras, but maybe we need to do cameras because. San Francisco's having problems and I think they had to do cameras.
Yeah.
I mean, honest. All right, I was about to say something I don't think I should say, I'm recording. Um, one thing with, the cameras, even if the cameras were like, I don't know if you can move them, but a camera facing. The active area during the transition hours and facing the two places stuff gets dumped, because it gets dumped up the hill by like. Where the highway department stuff is and then it gets dumped on the little access road, like where the, where the dumpsters.
Also, I'm not gonna, you know, we're not gonna look through the cameras and be like, did someone drop off the stuff chair at the swap shop?
Right.
But I mean, if someone takes a whole load of stuff and dumps it in the demo debris and drives off without talking to them, that is cameraable.
I, I don't think that's the issue.
But you still said, you said it happened.
No, I'm saying the issue is the swap shop.
Right.
Oh, they're, they're.
The issue, the issue, the issue is.
Oh, floating metal swap shop, okay.
I demoed a train.
It's okay, I misunderstood.
No, 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 that's not the issue.
We just gotta be telling people, hey, hey, you're not allowed to dump that unless you're the attendants.
That, that's the issue, because, because they, they see that other stuff. They, they're, they're, they're like, right.
Okay, okay, I, I misunderstood.
But the man was stuck, there was no terrible reason.
Would you guys, what do you guys think of the idea of having a, an attendant, hiring a swap shop attendant for the hours of the transfer station is open during the summer months?
Just how much money does it cost?
I'd have to go through my.
Yeah, we have, we have.
We have a church hall thing, yeah.
The question is, what would it cost and do we have it in the budget already?
I don't think they have that kind of money.
The only thing is the whole question about Sheldon, we're looking at, it's, we're taking care of that. So.
You were looking at his.
No.
Okay.
Um.
How do you feel about Kathleen's sign, because she apparently had a piece of wood.
Whatever's worked, but also it's, at the end of the day, I think it's that the attendants, the transfer station attendants, because they're the ones that we're paying, are we gonna have.
Right.
Real hard effort.
Kind of dirty for.
Need to say nothing at the swap shop unless it's open.
Well, it's open all the time.
Not all the time.
It didn't use, use.
They said, lots of times you go up there at eight thirty, eight forty in the morning.
Oh, you mean like before, before hours?
How often around the transfer station do you hear that?
No, because, because it opens at eight.
Every time I go there, they're, they're.
They're often not there.
Uh, well, Maureen, Maureen McFarlane, I think it is, she works a lot during the days on Sundays, um, uh.
When is Kathleen usually there?
I think she's there in like the last hour of the day on Wednesdays, so they're not, they're not there the entire time. So it's kind of hit or miss.
And what's your proposal about the whole thing about how, when we pay for the transfer station?
That's a really complicated.
That's not short.
We shouldn't even go ahead and do it today, it's too, it's too complicated.
Uh, let's go on to the agenda.
Yes.
Can I tell Kathleen she can do this?
Yes, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Five minutes.
Should we get a committee together to?
What we have on the transfer station.
We'll get a committee to look at this.
Do you guys subcommittee?
Okay.
I've I've got two very brief things, first of all, um, a couple of weeks ago, I brought an issue up uh, about the paving by the culvert in front of the post office and I thanked some of you and I wanted to make it public since it was a public complaint or mentioned and I just wanted to thank that it actually got done and we fixed it, so we're not pulling in that hole.
A bunch of ones, there was like three, two other ones they fixed too, right?
Right.
There was like two other ones they fixed too, and it's like three or four of them.
Yeah. Now, now they have to sweep up the bunch of little marbles there, no, really bigger than that. Uh, my other que- it's a question is, why is there police caution tape at the um, by the store?
Because the uh, the tree that's in between the store and the um, and the um, a post office is split right down the middle. And so to remove it might require the conservation commission.
Oh, so that's why the police.
It's like split, if you go look at it.
No, Chaven did it.
Ch- Chaven did, he came and got it.
There wasn't, he just borrowed the tape and did it, but the police didn't do it.
But if you go look at the tree.
I mean, I I was wondering if it's, it's actually blocking two parking spaces.
Yeah, but are they his parking spaces?
The store hasn't been very busy.
Yeah, but there's there's an event coming up on Saturday that needs a lot of parking spaces, and there's two parking spaces.
I think, yeah, if you if you go look at the tree, the tree is split right down there.
Okay, I I got, and so it is illegal, I I just didn't know if he had his own tape that said, please caution tape and and.
He he just came and grabbed their tape and put it on there.
Because it's about the the tree falling on them.
That's all.
Right, yeah.
I, you know, I just wanted to make sure it was a a legal thing, but I didn't realize that's what was one of the trees split, huh?
Are you gonna go cut it down to free apartment spots? Don't do that.
No.
Don't do.
Trust me, I won't do that, so.
Alright, Jen?
Is is there an officer in duty tonight or?
There is on duty, but I I don't know if she's in, she's probably out and about. Okay, I'm sure if she's in town or she's, yeah, she's she's in town, yes.
The best way to reach them is not ideal, but it's calling that, or picking up that phone.
Yeah.
And then it sends you to the dispatcher.
Yeah, but there's somebody out and about.
Yeah, the car's gone until she's back here. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good seeing you.
So, five thirteen?
Yeah, it's minutes, minutes, minutes.
Alright, on page two, in the second paragraph.
Give me a minute to pull it up.
Go for it.
Five thirteen, page two.
Second paragraph, upwards of a month, it says, although the state is somewhat vague, did you establish?
Sure, yeah. Exactly.
Um, if you put a space, if you have a ra- a ray colon, you should put a space after the colon before the next word.
Verza.
Flag in, uh, sign a letter to the legislature, Ray extending Jim Brown's police officer, and there was actually one on the previous page, I think, discussed noise concerns, Ray colon can't come on, but there should have been a space there too. Uh, let's see. Uh, what page is this? Page two, under discuss speeding concerns, Roger researched speed limits, paragraph, I think it it said, is a default speed limit of forty, it should be has a default speed limit, I think? It's pretty minor, this is nothing substantive, it's just.
No, it's not.
Um, page three, under unanticipated business.
Yep.
Uh, I just thought the wording on the, the police chief is proposing a four wheel drive truck. I, what was here, so we should be proposing a four wheel drive pickup truck for difficult road conditions due to weather and terrain?
Yeah.
Maybe? Um. And then for towing capabilities, I could, I thought parentheses to tow the proposed boat for Harper Master duties, close parentheses.
For towing capabilities to tow the proposed. Boat for Harper Master.
And for the.
And the.
And Brian, but yeah. Back to that side.
I mean, it's kinda crazy that. I remember when the police cruiser slid off into my parents' yard a couple of years ago back in a snowstorm.
Well.
Yeah. But it's, I mean, it makes sense to have a four wheel drive with a good snow tires if you're gonna be the police.
I I think so. Especially if you, you know, like you get off somebody else, yeah. Um, and you need to have enough power that you can do stuff, right? Because you never know who you're gonna need to help. So, um, okay, that was it, that was all I had. So I propose we pass five, the minutes of five thirteen twenty-five as a matter.
I second.
Call vote?
Yes.
Yes. Can we do June third?
Sure.
I don't think I had anything on this one.
Is the only call?
Yeah, I got nothing.
I propose that we accept the June third minutes as.
As written?
As written.
Second.
Call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Bless your heart.
You, I I'll let Tom know about our discussion about Beth Park.
About the front part, I emailed him, we emailed back and forth a little bit.
Wait, about what part?
Green Park, about running out, I said, you know, it's parks commissions.
I heard you. He told me that at eight o'clock this morning.
Well, I wasn't at eight o'clock this morning, but then, you know, it's 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 such a can of worms and it also doesn't need to be because we can just say, no, we don't really do reservations, which is probably the right answer.
If it's somebody, if you do it for one, then you gotta do it for everybody, you know?
And we we haven't charged people for using it's a public park.
No, we don't charge you and we don't guarantee that it will be available.
Yeah.
And I don't know, it would, like, let's say years down the road, there wants to be a Little League. Uh, I don't know how that works. Well, I think when I played Little League, I don't think, or Kyle Ripken, which was like a version of Leaf Little League, I don't think it really paved the town, but actually.
No, they just had probably scheduled it and everybody, at some point knows.
And actually, using it maintains it.
Right.
It's like the, it's like the Sunday softball, right?
Yeah, and it's just there, they don't, they they just play. They take care of it though, yeah. And I would just would tell Tom, whatever you do, say, don't if, don't come on Sunday morning.
Well, well, you know, I thought, make up.
Because you might have.
You need to figure six thousand.
Run out the field, you might have to have the police come.
Yeah.
Yeah, really?
They come on Sunday morning.
Well, they could join.
But exactly.
Probably like their last few weekends or playing, yeah, like her.
They get really.
I don't know when they go to either. And then I just told Tom, my email, I said, you know, the ball field was horrible and then he said Gary Oberhain came and did it yesterday.
Oh, yeah, they were yesterday, they were almost there for the whole.
I think over the weekend or something, or maybe yesterday, I don't, I don't usually walk out back there, but for some reason I did and I thought, wow, this is.
Yeah, they they were, they they were here when I got, yesterday, they they were here when I got here around eight thirty and then they left sometime between noon and one.
Did they just not dunk for twenty weeks or something?
I think they just, like, one like.
No, they don't do that every, okay.
They do like once a month or two times a year, but it's a lot better than it was when we had to pay complaints.
Right. Okay.
Alright, good to go?
I guess, I'm joined every end of the.
And then we're meeting at nine on Friday, right? And the meeting Thursday at six.
Not far.
Five, five, huh? Is six, right?
It was at six o'clock. What's at nine o'clock?
I don't remember.
Nine AM to sign the truck contract.
High ground.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Assuming it passes on through there, right?
Well, that would be.
And when's our next meeting, maybe?
Uh, I wanna do two Tuesdays, August fifth.
Works for me.
Nine AM one.
It's not like I'm going anywhere, I have it on the, yeah, I think we must have already agreed to that, because I I don't have a next.
Does that, is is that on the calendar, that nine AM one?
No, it's not on our calendar, it's. It's gonna be like, it could be two minutes. But at some point. If you wanna do some minutes, it could be a minute longer.
Did we put, what do you say?
That is, we posted it, right?
I'm I'm gonna post this evening, I held off, because I didn't know what minutes were gonna be, I could have posted, I also just always wanted to leave, I don't pick to.
Okay. Right, right. Yeah, but put the minutes on there, it's, it's fine.
What you wanna call it?
The better, the sooner we get the, the getting minutes off of our is always helpful.
Yeah. Alright. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call vote?
Yes.
Yes, meeting adjourned at seven fifty, eight PM.